Good afternoon. It's 4:30 PM on Tuesday, December 7th, 2021. We'll call the meeting of the New Ulm City Council to order. Item number one, consent agenda. Counselors, what are your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 2.1, a public hearing on the final plot of Oakwood Heights' fourth subdivision.
Madam President, members of the City Council, Dave Schnobrick, Community Development Director. This particular plat is submitted by Mark and Brenda Bergman and Brady Golden on behalf of Gastow Properties LLC. The current legal description of the property is Lot 4 and 5, Block 1, Oakwood Heights. The street address of the property is 16052 and 16032 Oakwood Heights Road. And the City Council approve the preliminary plat with conditions at your October 5th meeting. The area to be platted is located in Milford Township and outside of the New Ulm city limits. And this is a result of a city decision to extend our subdivision regulations into both Milford and Cottonwood Township in 2003. And the proposed plat falls within that particular area and as a result is subject to our subdivision regulations and our subdivision approval process. The area to be platted consists of two lots. They abut each other. And on the edge of one of the lots is a 66-foot wide access and utility easement. And located within that easement area is a paved road. The proposed plat would move the property line 33 feet to the east. And within the paved area, that would move, within the easement area, it would move it to the center of the easement area. So the paved roadway would then be split evenly between the two lots. The attachment number two, the site map, kind of shows the layout of that property on an aerial background. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the final plat at its October 28th meeting. The plat complies with city code requirements. There are three conditions. The first condition is that the applicant pay the plating fee of $210, and that payment is pending. The second is that the applicant will secure a lot area variance for the existing Lot 4 from the Joint Airport Zoning Board since the plat will reduce the size of, it will be replatted as Lot 2 below the three-acre minimum that exists for properties within the airport zoning area. And the Joint Airport Zoning Board will be meeting on December 14th to consider that item. Then the final, there's one additional condition, and that is that to date we have not received the necessary title information from the property owners. And the city attorney needs to review that to determine that the people signing the plat are in fact the lawful owners of the property. That would conclude the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Schnobrick.
I guess I got a question for the city attorney. Would you feel comfortable if we accept this plat tonight, knowing that we still have to redo another review on your part?
Yeah, I would be comfortable with that.
Okay.
Do you want us to put that in, kind of, in the motion as well?
Just state the three.
Stating that it's kind of, you know, that everything's clean.
Should be part of the conditions.
Right.
Yeah.
We'd have actually five conditions on, right?
No.
Or three?
We'd have three.
Have the three.
I might note, this has happened in the past, and we don't, the city will not sign the plat until all of the conditions are taken care of.
Okay. Motion to approve with conditions the final plat of Oakwood Heights' fourth subdivision.
Mr. President, Madam President, this is a public hearing, so I think you have to...
Yes, is there anyone that would like to be heard?
I doubt it, but just in case somebody does. Okay, then we're good.
We do have one motion by Counselor Mack.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Was your motion also to close the public hearing?
I did not include that. I will include it.
Were you adding that, right?
I'm adding to include closing the public hearing.
Great.
Second again.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 3.1, gravel pit license.
Something we do pretty much every year, so I'll go ahead and offer a motion to approve the renewal of the gravel pit license for M&amp;R paving and excavating for the period beginning January 1, ending December 31st, '22.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Item number 3.2, raffles gambling permit for Church of St. Mary.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a lawful gambling permit to the Church of St. Mary to conduct raffles gambling at the Church of St. Mary, 417 South Minnesota on Friday, February 4th, 2022.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Item 3.3, raffles gambling permit for Sioux Trails Ducks Unlimited.
Motion to approve the issuance of a lawful gambling permit for Sioux Trails Ducks Unlimited to conduct raffles gambling at the New Ulm Event Center, 310 20th Street South, New Ulm, on Friday, January 28th, 2022.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Item number 4.1, a conditional use permit for Kathleen Backer.
The proposed conditional use permit request is to allow the location of a residential dwelling unit in an existing building that's located in a downtown B2 zoning district. The B2 zoning district is a service business district. Legal description of the property is Lot 8, Block 67, south of Center Street. Street address is 125 South Broadway. Property is located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Second South Street and South Broadway. And a former church is located at that site. The property owner is proposing to convert the lower-level dining room of that particular building into a single, one-bedroom apartment unit. The upper level would continue to be used for the activities that currently take place there, and those are listed on the applicant's application form. In order to recommend approval of the request, the Planning Commission had to consider whether this matter complied with two different sets of criteria. The first set is found in Section 9.82, Subdivision 2 of the city code. And those criteria are the ones that are typically considered when evaluating a request for a conditional use permit. The second set of criteria is found in Section 9.10, Subdivision 3C of the city code. And these criteria are established in order to allow a residential dwelling unit in a B2 zoning district. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the request at their December 2nd meeting. The reason for doing so is that the application complies with the criteria identified in Section 9.82, Subdivision 2. And it complies with the criteria identified in Section 910, Subdivision 3C. Thirdly, the apartment would be compatible with other residential and business land uses in this area of the community. Fourth, the apartment would not adversely impact other area land uses. And fifth, the residential use would replace a potentially more intense institutional space. The institutional space being the dining room. There were three conditions regarding this request. The first is that the applicant property owner will pay the cost to record the permit with the Brown County Recorder's Office. Secondly, any increase in the number of bedrooms or a new apartment unit on the property would require the issuance of a new conditional use permit. And third, that the applicant will provide two off-street parking spaces for the dwelling unit. That would conclude the staff report.
Thank you.
From the Planning Commission, you know, we had no oral or written comments on it from any of the neighbors. They were fine with it. We've already granted this similar on the same block for the former gas station for the two apartment units. And across the street, we actually did it too at the former Colts Corner property, so it meets the criteria, so.
The neighbors were notified of this, correct?
Correct.
For a request for a conditional use permit, we notify all property owners within 350 feet of the site.
Okay, thank you.
As far as you know, is this a monthly rental or is this like a VRBO vacation rental? Is what the use of this is going to be used for?
The applicant is here.
Yeah.
It's my understanding that she will be residing on the premises.
Oh, very good.
Backer, is there anything else you want to add to what, the presentation tonight?
Not at this time, thank you.
That sounds like... Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say with unanimous recommendation, I'll make a motion, offer a resolution, waive the reading, approving with conditions the application of Kathleen Backer requesting a conditional use permit to allow the location of a residential dwelling unit in a downtown B2 zoning district. This property legally described as Lot 8, Block 67, south of Center Street. The street address of the property is 125 South Broadway.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Item number 5.1, professional service contract for 20th South Street Improvement Project.
Madam President, City Counselors, the City of New Ulm has been programmed to receive STP Small Urban Grant in the amount of $2,25,600 to assist with the funding of a utility and roadway reconstruction project on 20th South Street from Broadway to the Minnesota River Bridge in fiscal year 2024. The project will include the reconstructing of the existing roadway segment and undergrown utilities. At the August 17th City Council meeting, you authorized staff to solicit proposals from consulting engineering firms to deliver this federal and MSAS project through the contract bid-award phase. Staff received three proposals by the November 12th deadline. I should note that the time required to work through federal and state aid process is extremely lengthy. Deliverables include federal project memorandum, feasibility reports, plans, specification bidding documents, public open houses, roadway concepts, and the like for the public outreach and project delivery of this project. It is the recommendation of the staff to award the contract to Bolton &amp; Mink in the amount of $320,718. We budgeted $400,000 for this project. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Say, Joe, we've got a significance difference here. The ISG is 244, and you're coming in at 320 for Bolton &amp; Mink. We're about $75,000 apart. Can you tell me what the difference is?
Yep, so there's nine different scoring factors when we rate these proposals. They're all rated the same. State statute does allow for us to not choose the lowest price. The nine scoring factors are listed within the proposal, but I'll walk through them. Number one is the understanding of the project. Number two is the needs and requirements of the city. Three is qualifications and experience of the project staff. Four is the city's prior knowledge and experience with project staff. Five is the consultant's approach to the project. Six is the completeness and quality of the work program. Seven is performance on similar projects. Eight is adherence to all conditions within the request for proposals. And finally, ninth is the consultant not to exceed fee. When reviewing the proposals, to be honest, Bolton &amp; Mink's proposal was very good. They prepared a very good proposal. They hit on all the requirements within the request for proposals, including the public outreach, and the big factor is the coordination with the CP Railway, which could be a lengthy process in itself because we may need to install new utilities underneath that railway segment. They dedicated staff time to that and then multiple public outreach and coordination meetings with their public outreach specialists. So in analyzing that further, staff looked at the number of hours that the consultant firms dedicated to delivering this project for us. And that's where we saw a huge discrepancy between ISG and Bolton &amp; Mink. ISG had dedicated 1,526 hours to this project while Bolton &amp; Mink had almost 2,300. And when we broke that down to cost per hour, that's listed within the action form as well. So after review of all the conditions that we requested in the request for proposals and the proposals that were delivered, it was our recommendation, even though they weren't the lowest to award the project to Bolton &amp; Mink.
Lowest on the overall, but they're still lowest on the cost per hour when you factor in their ordering here.
And, you know, Bolton &amp; Mink has delivered many well-done projects for the city, and we were very impressed with the proposal they put together.
Would you say ISG maybe just lacks a little more of the experience or the...
We've worked with ISG, and they're delivering the project for us for next construction season. But we just felt, when comparing the two proposals, that really, they weren't comparable, I guess, in the end.
I'll go ahead and offer a motion to award the contract to Bolton &amp; Mink, provide professional services for the 20th Street, 20th South Street Improvement Project, $320,718.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I just appreciate the clarification on it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, and I mean, there definitely is a difference in price, but then, yeah, I see the difference in the scores as well. Do we always kind of break it down by hours dedicated to delivery?
Madam President, not normally, but we did in this instance just because of the cost discrepancy and the number, the discrepancy in the number of hours. That was something that really stood out. When we were looking through the work plan, they detail each task and how many hours they dedicate, and that really showed the difference there.
Okay, and that was weighed in the score then, I'm assuming also? Okay, great, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion is carried. Under new business, item number 6.1, appointment to the Police Commission.
Motion to approve the appointment of Adam Toll's to the Police Commission to fill the unexpired term of Andrea Lizer.
We do have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Just that I wish Andrea well in her new endeavors as a judge and welcome Adam to the Police Commission. Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Item number 6.2, an appointment for Human Rights Commission.
I'll offer a motion to approve the appointment of Katie Dorshner.
Dorshner.
Okay, to the Human Rights Commission to fill the unexpired term of, and mine is blocked, Pastor Diane Hatman.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion is carried. Another appointment here to the Safety Commission.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Randy Potta, the Safety Commission, to fill the vacant openings since the mayor's 2021 appointments.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I want to just make a mention, Randy, I've known Randy much of my life. He came up to me this summer out at Herman Fest, and he said, Terry, I've lived here my whole life. It's time I get involved. Put me on a commission. I need more people like that.
That's great. Any other discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Item number 6.4, renew terms of the collective bargaining agreement with AFSCME.
President Counselor, Shawna Boongarten, HR Director, AFSCME has ratified their agreement. I'm not going to go through all the changes. There were actually few changes. Major changes are, we did get a three-year agreement. In 2022, a 2% wage increase. 2023, a 3% wage increase. And in 2024, a 2.75% increase. Also, implementation of the new comp and class study as approved by the council. And then an increase in standby pay of $10 per month each of the three years. And then the change in the sick severance that the council has approved already. Otherwise, the other changes were minor. So unless anybody has any questions?
Number six is pretty significant, wouldn't you say?
That would be the sick severance payout, yeah. So currently, we go 10 to 25% based upon average number of sick leave hours used over the term of employment. Council has approved a change to that to 15 to 30% based upon years of service with the city.
And correct me, Shawna, if I'm not correct, but this also aligns with what others in the industry have been doing as well?
Yep, that is correct. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I support it. I just wanted to make a note that that, to me, was a huge change.
Sure, absolutely.
Previous setup, so. And it just makes more sense and it's more fair.
It is, definitely. I agree.
I'm not hearing a lot of discussion from counselors. I'll approve the city manager's recommendation to adopt the renewal terms of the collective bargaining agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSCME Local 1204, for the period beginning January 1, 2022, and expiring on December 31st, 2024.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Item number 6.5, adopt revisions to the city and PUC Personnel Policy Manual.
So all of the changes were included in your packet there. There were several policies that were added due to changes in state law for 2022. We also added, it's called a dress-for-your-day policy, which really states that employees should use their best judgment when deciding what to wear to work every day with just some basic guidelines included. We did include the change to the sick severance, as I just discussed on that. And then also, regular full-time city employees voted for a change to increase their contribution to the healthcare savings plan. Otherwise, just a few other minor changes.
I did have a chance to read through all of it. That's what I do. And there wasn't anything in there that was glaring or that was, that I had questions on. They all seemed very appropriate.
I concur.
It seemed like reasonable changes, so I'll make a motion to approve the revisions to the city PUC Policy Manual, which would be in effect January 1, 2022.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Thank you for your work on that, Shawna. Yep, those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Item number 6.6, supplemental American Rescue Plan Act funds received.
President Becker and counselors, this was just some money that previously we got just under $7 million in this year for the ARPA funds, and then that would be matched again next summer. Once all the cities made their applications and the money was distributed, they realized there was some cities that didn't apply for the funds. So they just made a supplemental distribution, so we got another just shy of $23,000. So both of those, the original $7 million and the $23,000 will be matched again next summer, so. The league just recommended that we pass a resolution accepting those funds.
That's great, and that supplement came just from other cities that did not apply for that support. Okay.
Andrea, did you say seven, or Nicole, did you say 7 million?
7 million, didn't I? 700,000, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So in total, I was thinking... In tot, I've been looking at a lot of numbers today. In total, we'll be getting just over 1.4 million.
Over the two years. Mm-hmm.
I'll offer the resolution, we the reading, accepting supplemental American Rescue Plan Act funds distributed by the state of Minnesota.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I think we just have to have a brief discussion on the plans.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, is what we were going to do with that, an unexpected extra?
That was, so when we talked about it originally, we left room depending on, you know, how much we ended up using towards the rec center project. And then the rest, I would imagine, will probably end up using towards some water projects, the lead abatement. We left room, you know, to add more funds to the street projects that we had into that water as well.
We potentially could use it even yet tonight. Setting though.
Yeah.
I'm talking about as far as the levy?
No. Unless you wanted to take something out of the budget and use it, those funds specifically for that, that would, yeah, something that would qualify.
Is there something in mind you had?
No, I just thought in general that maybe it should be on the table.
I mean, we're already using 100,000 for the comp plan out of it, and payroll software, the lead abatement, the construction project. And then the rec center were the main, main things.
Comprehensive plan.
400,000 or so was for the industrial park utilities.
Okay. That'll come up later.
I believe we do have a motion and a second. I believe we do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Wormka?
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, that motion is carried. Item number 6.6, Supplemental American, oh, sorry, 6.7 Convention and Visitors Bureau Financials.
Council President and Counselors, before you have the CBB annual budget as prepared by Michael Loft, key highlights for this year's budget, is they're looking for an annual revenue increase of 35,000. That's just based on local trends, people traveling again and lodging. They are looking at funding about $3,000 for their advertising and marketing assistance program. Looked at conference and leadership training, which I would make the assumption would be for the new president to get training, necessary training to run the CBB, and then looking at over 20,000 in their advertising budget, over 21, just because now they can go out and advertise and draw more tourism to New Ulm, because again, we're traveling more now. So it's in line with kind of everything they've done in the past, so I have no issues with their current budget as presented.
Do the Airbnb and VRBOs get charged lodging?
Yes.
Great.
And inspected.
Yep.
Anyway, one comment, I'm still sitting on the CBB. They're really excited for the last six, seven months. We all know that the hotel motel tax is back coming in. They can start advertising, spending some money, so they're very excited for 2022. Hopefully it stays that way. With that, I'll receive and order file the report from Michael Loft, President and CEO of the New Ulm Cherry Hainburg of Commerce regarding the Convention and Visitors Bureau Financial Report for the quarter ending October 31, 2021, and approve the 2022 budget for the Convention and Visitors Bureau beginning on January 1, 2022.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion is carried. Item number 6.8, League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust Liability Coverage.
Counselors, this is an annual item that we need to do for the insurance renewal every year, and it's just waiving some of those tort limits and going with, sticking with the state limits instead of insuring something different.
So to not waive?
Yeah, to not waive is the.
Well, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, to not waive monetary limits on municipal tort liability established by the Minnesota Statute 466.04, accepting liability coverage limits of $1,500,000 from LM CIT effective January 1, 2022, and authorize the city manager to execute the waiver on behalf of the City of New Ulm. Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion is carried. Item number 6.9, Police Department Donations.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, to accept monetary donations from Doctors Akri and Clark in the amount of $1,000, and the 3M Club of New Ulm in the amount of $700 to be used to support the ongoing shop with a hero program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? I think it's great. I think it's a great program. Chief, how is the program doing this year? Do you have enough? Sorry.
Council President, members of the council, we had shop with a hero this last Saturday. It was a very successful event. We had, you know, certainly ample funds there due to generous donations. So this, this came in after the fact before we were able to, so this would be for the ongoing support of the program.
Okay.
And they were well aware of that when they made the donation. But yes, it's been very successful. We had a lot of fun last Saturday.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Item number 6.10, Library Donations and Memorials.
I'll offer a resolution, waive the reading, accepting the donations and memorials to the New Ulm Public Library for the period July 1, 2021, November 8, 2022.
Second.
November 8, 2021.
Oh, I'm sorry, 21.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Any more discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion is carried. Item number 6.11, Weed and Snow Removal Fees.
Council President and Counselors, this is just a clarification on the fee that was approved at the last council meeting. The fee for weed, weed removal is a one-time fee that they pay $300 one time, and then it's the cost. And with, with snow removal, it was a lower fee, but when you increase the fee to 300, you, it was suggested to charge it each occurrence. So do you want both of the fees to be each occurrence, or do you want it to mirror the weed and just be a one-time fee of three and then just the cost of removing the snow?
I've always been boisterous on this. I'd vote tonight to raise snow to 400, but I'll go with what the rest of the council wants to do. It is a lot of work. In the past, when I was employed, it's a lot of work with the snow complaints, and we just get the snowbirds, the repeat offenders, the top 10. Staff is constantly taking the phone call, going out, taking the picture, bringing the picture back. Administrative or the secretary sends out the notices, line the contractor up. It just, I wish the problem would go away.
So each occurrence?
Well, I mean, I'm okay with if council goes one time.
My concern is, you know, with the research that I did, we cannot profit from a fee. We can only recover the cost that we put into it. So we cannot charge, you know, an abnormally high fee just to deter it. Then it becomes a fine, and it's something that needs to be moved and placed somewhere else in the ordinance.
Yeah.
Or in the, in the, in the city code.
All right, I get it.
But, you know, we never really intended to make money on this, but we wanted the people to comply. And, you know, the snow removal, you have certain areas where really highly walked areas where lots of people walk. And then, of course, it's not plowed or not shoveled, and then people trample it, and now it becomes slippery, and, and it's just so frustrating for so many citizens that they're sick of it, too. I, if you start adding up all the fee, all the costs of all the phone calls to us, to city staff, sending law enforcement out or whoever to verify that the grass is tall or the sidewalk's not plowed, I don't think it'd be that far away from $300.
No, and I'm not saying that, but to charge that $300 every time, because so for the...
I'm, I'm all right going that road.
Charge 300 every time because you're hoping they're going to go in compliance, and you're not going to have to.
Well, and that was the clarification because of the last, at the previous council meeting, it was every time with the $300.
I guess when we were voting on it at, at our last meeting, I was on the assumption we were going to do $300 and then a fee per time, you know.
The cost of the move of...
Cost of, you know, when we hire the contractor to go out and do the job, that would be on top of it. So basically, we took our $265 administration fee and raised it $35, and, you know, you know, that's, that's how I was interpreting it.
And we collect on this through their taxes?
If they do not pay, they, because they are billed for it.
But some do pay when you bill.
Yes. We only end up assessing maybe 10 at the most, seven to 10 of them every year. Most of them pay, and once they're, once they get that first one, most of them come within compliance, I think.
Elwood?
Council President, Counselors, Elwood Zabel, building official, I deal with the snow complaints. Just to clarify, the snow complaints, we get a complaint, we go out, take the picture, send the contractor out to, to take care of it, whereas weeds, they got a seven-day notice. So a snow complaint doesn't know they're getting the $300 fine or the fee, and if it comes back-to-back snowfalls, they might not find out about it for the second one either, until they get the bill. But just so you're aware of that, this was declared a safety hazard a number of years back. At that time, they said just go out and take care of it as, as they come in. There is no notice sent out. There used to be a notice sent out, but...
But that is actually following the letter of our ordinance, if I remember correctly.
The way it's set up now, yes. I don't know if they changed it at that time, but...
No, we're leaving it like that.
Early 2000s, but it's, we go out and take care of it right away. About 24 hours after the snowfall. They have that, that time period to clean the sidewalk.
And you're correct, so each snowfall, there's about 10 homes on average you have to deal with, or is it just kind of 10 repeat offenders? I'm just trying to get a clearer picture. Is it three that, you know, this time and three this time, and it, but?
It's an on complaint basis as we go out and do it. There's usually that three to four that generally are repeat offenders that we know from year to year, unless somebody else purchased the property, and then it goes away.
And then do you go out and just look for ones that aren't done and do those also? Or is it only, it's only a complaint-based system?
We've only done that one time, back mid-2000s.
Okay.
And at that time, when we went out and looked for them, there was over 150.
Right.
So.
Okay.
It's...
Sometimes after two or three days, maybe then the nice neighbor does it, or...
Right.
Possibly.
But as long as there's a complaint, you're not going to dispatch?
Not at this point, no. It's complaint basis, only unless we have the repeat offenders that we know about that never shovel this.
And on the flip side, do you, do you have repeat complainers?
Sometimes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, just, thank you so much. And so do, Nicole, does there need to be any clarity in this when we make the resolution? Or as stated, it is, okay, what clarity do we need?
I didn't know how to put that in there.
Okay.
If you tell me how to word it that way, I'll word it.
So you just need to say both the weed and snow removal would have the one-time admin fee, or they would both be have the admin fee for each offense?
But the letter, you kind of said the letter of the law says we really can't, we can do the one time.
The one time, it makes sense, and we, you know, we have the backup for that and the calculations with the time that goes into it.
And do we want to leave 265 and 300 or make them the same?
Well, we made them both 300 already.
Okay.
300.
Okay, I'm going to offer the resolution, waive the reading, to make the designated changes to the weed and snow removal fees on the City of New Ulm's schedule of fees effective January 1, 2022, and making it a one-time admin fee for both snow removal and weed notice. Along with charges.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Next year, 400.
We'll see. Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Councilor Christian?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Councilor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion is carried. Item number 7.1, Report of Claims Paid.
I'll offer a motion to accept a list of claims, the amount of $5,587,918 and 60 cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion is carried. With no additional business, this meeting is adjourned and will begin the truth in taxation meeting beginning at 6:00 PM.